I'd like to call to order the City of Riverbank Special Planning Commission Meeting, Wednesday, May 21, 2014. Call to order, please.
Chair Stewart, Vice Chair Hughes here. Commissioner Ville Debois, Commissioner Dagley.
Here.
Commissioner McKenney.
Here.
Let the record show that Chair Stewart and Commissioner Ville Debois are both excused.
Conflict of interest: any planning commission, authority member or staff who has a direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item to be considered are to declare their conflict. Any conflicts, commissioners? Staff? Authority member? Seeing none, we move to number one, public comments. No action to be taken. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Planning Commission Board. Individual comments will be limited to a maximum of five minutes per person, and each person may speak once during this time. Time cannot be yielded to another person. Under state law, matters presented during the public comment period cannot be discussed or acted upon. For record purposes, state your name and city of residence. Please address the entire Planning Commission Board. Number two, consent calendar. All items listed on the consent calendar are to be acted upon by a single action of the Planning Commission unless otherwise requested by an individual Planning Commissioner, member for special consideration. Otherwise, the recommendation of staff will be accepted and acted upon by roll call vote. Item 2A. Posting of the Agenda. The Agenda for the May 21, 2014 Planning Commission Meeting was posted on the City Chamber Bulletin Board and the City Hall North and South Bulletin Board on May 16, 2014.
Just one second. I think that we might have somebody in the public that wants to present public comments.
Oh, I'm sorry?
That's when we can come to the microphone.
Okay. I mentioned that. I overviewed you.
We're for item 3.1, so it's not time for you to come up yet.
Okay, so we're gonna go through the consent calendar and then we'll announce your item. Okay? Oh, you're quite welcome. So, item 2A. Item 2B, the approval of the Agenda. Item 2C, the approval of the minutes for April 15, 2014 of the Planning Commission Meeting. We ask to carry over the April 15, 2014 meeting minutes to the next Planning Commission Meeting. So, can I get an approval, please?
Yeah, I move we approve the consent items 2A, 2B, and 2C.
I think what I heard is that we're gonna hold off on item 2C, so it would just be, I'm sorry, just be approved 2A and 2B.
Right.
I second it.
Okay, at this time, we'd like to open up the public hearing.
Wait, hold on a second.
We got a roll call.
Roll call vote, please, on consent calendar.
Vice Chair Hughes.
Yes.
Commissioner Dagley.
Yes.
And Commissioner McKenney.
Here.
Okay.
Okay. Public hearings, item 3.1, Cup 02, 2013, Rocchio Taqueria, Resolution 2014-006.
Madam Chairperson, members of the commission, we have an application tonight, conditional use permit 02-2013, request to sell alcoholic beverages, beer and wine, for an existing Mexican restaurant. The project is located at 2761 Patterson Road, Suite 130. Is commercially zoned. It is a Class 32 exemption for SEQA. And the staff report pretty much goes through the executive summary, SEQA determination, and the analysis for the proposed use. We have in the staff report a map, which is rather unique. We've got a map of the ABC licenses in the City of Riverbank by class code, so you've got those. We also have a statement in support of the CUP findings by the applicant, photos of the site, and then also agency comments that have been presented to us. So what you have on the screen now is the location of where the property is located in proximity to other land uses. Okay, let's go to the next slide. There's the business there located next to the old Taco Bell, which is now the renovated Burger King. Carl's Jr., rather, sorry.
Do you have a pointer?
I don't, but we don't have a pointer. I didn't bring a pointer. So, anyway, so this is the taqueria here. So if you go back, go back one. Go back one slide.
It's in that little aisle way between the old Taco Bell.
Yes, I'll try to do that. So, yes, so you could see the pin actually in the building, the project location there. Okay? The next, you can see it, the next slide shows with the taqueria itself. So there's a number of businesses. It's one of the businesses in the middle. Okay? Let's go to the next slide. This is the interior of the restaurant, next slide, and this shows the ABC licenses that have been currently issued citywide, so you can see them in proximity to one another. And these are the types of ABC licenses that have been issued citywide, so we now have that as a resource. And again, that's in your staff report as well. What's the next slide? Is that the last one for this? Yeah, okay. So, staff has recommended approval of the conditional use permit. This is obviously an opportunity for those adjacent property owners to comment, the project proponents to comment on it. We have a draft resolution starting on page seven, which is Resolution 2014-006, which, should the commission agree with what staff is presenting, would serve to approve the CUP to allow for the on-sale consumption of beer and wine at this existing Mexican restaurant. Are there any questions?
Any questions, commissioners? Then we'll open up the public hearing. Anyone would like to speak?
Good afternoon. My name is Ramon Bermudez, City of Riverbank, for 21 years. Thank you for letting me come over to the microphone and explain my situation here. Dear commissioner members, I would like to comment on a business that is a landro mat that is two doors from this one of Rocchio Taqueria. Has been there for a few months, closed, and is an eyesore. Also, the alley that comes right off 108 goes to Jackson. It's a mess constantly. I requested the City of Riverbank in one of the meetings, actually, also, for the city council, and they might have picked up some, but they left all the potholes, all the weeds, like they only went for papers and plastics or something, you know? And it's a constant problem also with three to four individuals that are usually panhandling, what it's called, which is prohibited in the San Luis County. And I would like for any of you or all of you to do something about it, because it takes away from those businesses, as well as now Carl's Jr., but I don't know if they had any problem. Containers for the garbage, this one on the other side for the alley, for those donut shop, bakery, ice cream place, Taqueria Rocchios, the beauty parlor or barber shop at the same time, and that used to be landro mat. And they all hang in that area. Policemen are called and they come, but they don't do much about it.
May I? I'm sorry to interrupt, but it sounds like we're talking two different things here. Are you talking about the restaurant?
Yes, that one is included. I'm saying about that.
Versus the landro mat?
Landro mat that is two doors down, at the end, that one closes to the alley. It's been a eyesore because it's left a lot of people, like I said, hanging around, and so many of the individuals are just panhandling, asking for money. They don't have any need because they're usually from the place that you know is so-called, I guess, drug rehabilitation, or I don't know if it is still that. But those are individuals that are well strong and well done, and they have their money and their food and their clothing and their shelter right there in the house on Patterson Road.
So, Mr. Bermudez, are you speaking on behalf of Rocchio Taqueria, or are you opposing this?
I came over with them in case they needed some translation, and I was gonna be here for them to.
Oh, okay.
To offer my translation services to them.
Okay.
But now that I'm here, I'm glad that I'm here, because Mr. McKenney, I've known him for a few years, and Mr. (inaudible), excuse me. I've known a couple of people here for a few years, and so they know that I like to be active on these things, and I would like for something to be done about it. If you can discuss it later on, it's all right, if you don't answer it to me right now, but those are very important issues.
Okay.
That have been going on for years and shouldn't be.
May I ask, do you have some type of written information that we can review later, perhaps? Because you had a lot of things in your testimony, I don't want to overlook anything. Is there a possibility that you can provide something for us? And then John? Would this be a planning commission matter with what he's discussing so far? It sounds like panhandling is an issue, some cleanup is an issue.
The business that bit there, the so-called landro mat, has been closed for many months already.
Etc. Are these things that need to go before the city council, or is this a planning commission matter?
Well, I mean, we don't want to confuse things. You know, we're here to talk about, you know, an ABC license for an existing restaurant. And that's what we're acting on. That's the land use decision the commission's taking. The issues that are being raised tonight, I can address one of them, the alley specifically. And when Carl's Jr. went through their renovation, you know, we conditioned them to pay their proportional share of alley improvements. And in fact, we're accumulating funds to do complete alley improvements in back of this development. Because they're just simply talking about an ABC license, we felt it was inappropriate for us to impose any specific conditions on this type of use that would ask them to pay, contribute monies towards that alley abandonment, or alley improvement, rather, sorry. If they were gonna do, if the landlord was gonna do extensive improvements to the site, then we'd have cause, but at this point, it's inappropriate. So, the city is aware of the concerns that are being raised. We can't really deal with vacant buildings, nor can we deal with, you know, vagrant folks or loitering, so that's not really something we're here to talk about tonight, so.
I was just bringing that to the attention in case that something can be done about it from your side.
Well, we thank you very much.
Because it's affecting the businesses.
Bringing that to our attention.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone here that would like to speak for the Rocchio Taqueria this evening? Okay.
Anything they want to say that you can translate right now?
His name is Juan Vega.
Vega.
And he lives, lives in Modesto.
Vivo en Modesto, California.
Angel is in Modesto, California.
Nada más quisiera saber si hay algún problema para conseguir la licencia aún, por el tiempo que tenemos aplicando y todo eso que no hemos podido completar, llevar el proceso nosotros bien, porque lo estamos haciendo personalmente. No contratamos una persona para que nos llevara los papeles a la ciudad y todo.
Jesus, can you live up to this point? Is everything okay for the permit to sell the beer and wine, because it has taken so many months for one thing or another? Being that they did the initiation of the application on their own, they didn't hire, usually like other businesses, have somebody exclusively for that, and they can dedicate themselves to the business, but they've been in between.
Okay.
Working and doing the application process.
I'll direct that question to staff. John?
Yeah.
Can you tell me if everything's in order with regard to this application?
Yeah, we're ready to go.
I have a question.
Okay. Commissioner?
In regards to the selling of alcohol and everything, seeing that there is loitering going on, is it, it's presented in here that everything will be consumed and sold within the establishment? How do you control that?
He's saying that you have, que tiene, perdón, no, I say in Spanish, que él tiene una idea de que se va a aprobar la licencia, que en el comentario que traje de la gente que anda ahí limoneando y pidiendo, no se aplica a ellos sino al consejo de la ciudad, pero que cómo va a controlar eso? Las ventas solamente se va a hacer dentro del local de todos.
La venta se hace solamente dentro del restaurante, no vendemos para que alguna bebida salga fuera del establecimiento.
Yeah, the sale of the beer and wine is with the meals inside the establishment. There is nothing for sale to take out or anything like that.
So someone just can't walk in like a bar and just say, you know, I'll just have a beer?
Que si no puede venir alguien de la calle y ordenar solamente una cerveza.
No, 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 prácticamente, no, que la cerveza la vendemos con la comida, porque la mayoría de la gente que va, nos pide la comida pero quiere unas cervezas o...
No, because it's going to be sold, if it is a beer, it's gonna be sold with a meal, with the food, because usually people come just for that liquor, no, they won't sell it, but usually come in families and the adults want to have a meal with a beer, and they want the beer with a meal, and that's how they will sell it.
And may I ask if you've already applied then for your ABC license? Has there been an application to the alcohol beverage control? Okay. Any other questions? Is there anyone here to speak against this? Do you have any concluding remarks?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Any concluding remarks?
Thank you.
Okay. Does the public hearing then on item 3.1? Commissioners, any other questions or discussions?
Well, I don't have any issues with it. I'm just, I'm glad that the police were, requests for comments were provided, so I think they, they're the primary bear of some of the initial response that might be required, so no other comments.
So then the resolution is found on page 17 for your reference.
No good admission from the board, please.
I move we adopt resolution for the Planning Commission to approve conditional use permit for the sale of alcohol beverage for on-premises consumption, titled 41 License Within the General Commercial C2 Zoning District Located at 2761 Patterson Road, number 130.
Can you name the resolution, please?
Resolution 2014-006.
Do I have a second?
Oh, yeah, a second.
Vice Chair Hughes?
Yes.
Commissioner Dagley?
Yes.
And Commissioner McKenney?
Good luck.
Okay, moving on to item 3.2, Cup 01, 2014, Resolution 2014-007. I don't want to butcher this name. Yuri Somoleski. And to construct a detached 1,045-square-foot accessory building for personal gym that appears to be in a single-family zoning district. John?
Yeah, madam chairperson, members of the commission, we have a conditional use permit. It's an accessory building to an existing residential unit, a house off of Alton Court, 5806 Alton Court Property Zone, and designated single-family residential. Site plan is shown up on the board at this point, so you can see is completely surrounded by residential development. They're proposing a 1,045-square-foot, primarily a single-story structure on this property, specifically in the backyard. There's a kind of an aerial Google view, if you will, of the property in question. The project is exempt from SEQA. Copy of the site plan and analysis included in the staff report. Can you go to the next slide, please? The proposed structure is to be five feet off the side property line next to a swimming pool in the person's backyard. The dimensions are shown, I can't read them from, at this point, but I think it's 35 feet, excuse me, 55 feet in length by 19 feet in width. Next slide. This is an architectural pencil drawing of the proposal. It's got a high roof line. The building itself, it has broken up into a couple different parts. Let's go to the next slide. Front, or the, one portion of the building would be for storage, potentially office, I guess, and the back would be gymnasium, and then dry sauna, wet sauna, and then a bathroom. Doesn't appear to be any access to the upstairs, even though it's got a high roof line and/or stairway access. Staff's original concern with this is that potentially it could be used for upstairs offices, and it was gonna be used more for commercial use as opposed to just for accessory use to the residential dwelling unit and residential neighborhood. We have sent out notices to the adjacent property owners within 300 feet of the proposed use. I've received one phone call and provided additional information to that individual, and at this point, we received nothing back in writing or verbal other than that one phone call from one of the adjacent property owners.
What was your concern?
Just wanting to know more detail about what the applicant was proposing, so the email included, you know, details that you're seeing tonight about, you know, the size of the building, what the building's footprint looked like, and it's, the building's proximity to the property lines and existing improvements. So, doesn't appear to be a concern. I've got nothing as a follow-up, either in writing or verbally. So, what, staff has reviewed the application, it appears to be consistent with all of our city standards. We've had the applicant give us findings to help support the application. Those are part of the administrative record as well. Those are shown as attachment four, and then any public agency comments are shown as attachment five. In the staff report presentation on page 58 is a proposed Planning Commission Resolution 2014-07, which is suggesting approval of the accessory structure as presented. Any questions?
Yeah, I understand it's exceeding the square footage percentage, sort of like 20%, and it's like a 37 or something like that?
Oh, that's why it's require, oh, yeah. So you've exceeded the 20% of the accessory structure, which is why he's applying for a conditional use permit. So that's, so the way the code is written, if you exceed that 20% threshold, then you have to go through a conditional use permit process.
Is the owner of the property here, or is it open for them to speak? Give us a...
Once you open the public hearing.
I'd like to open, at this time, the public hearing, please, on item 3.2. Is there anyone here to speak for this project? Is there anybody here to speak against it? Okay?
My name is Rick Hilgen. I live in Riverbank. Hilgen, H-I-L-G-N. I live in the City of Riverbank. For the past eight years, we bought our house there. We are the owners of the house. And my property, I share a fence line with.
Go back to it here.
The property in question.
So there is a map you can show us.
For you.
Oh, right up there. You see where the pool is? No, the other pool to the right. Okay, I'm, the house right left, to the left of it. So I'm directly right behind his house.
He has a pool now, but it's not showing it right here.
Correct.
Okay.
So, my thing is, when I first read the letter, and I was going through some of the literature, and I come across 1,045 square foot, my first reaction was, wow, huge, okay? We all live in a really tight-knit court neighborhood, and I'm really disappointed in a lot of the neighbors, because a lot of neighbors consensus with the neighborhood. Nobody wants it, but nobody here to show up. So disappointing for me that nobody even sent letters in. But consensus is, nobody wants this building, and there's a couple reasons why. For me personally, I won't speak on their behalf, because they're not here, but it's a huge house. It's between four to five bedrooms. There's at least three bathrooms in that house. And for the last year and a half that I've seen anybody living there, it's two people. So it's hard for me to believe that a personal gym is 1,045 square feet. To me, that's more of a personal trainer/business in his backyard. That's my main concern, is the traffic and the size of this building is, don't make no sense to me, if you have such a big house, why you need such a big building in the backyard. And if you guys were to go a couple more slides back and show the layout of the building, to me, that looks like a business, that looks like a commercial business. No, but you had it right there. To me, that looks like a commercial building versus, I'm just gonna build a gym in my backyard, because I have a big backyard. Granted, he has a huge backyard. But we all bought a house in that neighborhood to live there and enjoy everybody's trees and birds. To me, if you're gonna build, if you're, and he haven't lived there long, so his mindset was to build that probably from the get-go, that if he wanted something that large, maybe he should have thought of something outside the city with some acreage, some land, so nobody else has to look at this big building when it come out. We all have gorgeous houses and backyards, and to come out and see a big building is not gonna be pleasant at all. Just gonna go over some of the other concerns, and like I said, the traffic. The main concern is, it's, I honestly, in my heart, don't believe it's gonna be personally him and his wife, and that it. I doubt that. I've dealt with this guy. He showed lack of respect for the neighbors about a year ago, building a fire this high and eight feet wide beside his house, next to his house and a fence, and we, when we poked our head over, because we couldn't even see the back of our house, there was so much smoke, and we said, hey, you can't, you can't be doing that in this neighborhood. Not one word out of him. Did his thing. I'm not one to make waves with my neighbors, especially when I share a fence line with them. Call the fire department. If he's not gonna respect his neighbors, then what other choice do I have? Well, it took a half hour of them banging on his door, and a neighbor to coax him to come out and talk to the fire department. So, yeah, he's coming here getting a permit, and he wants his big building, he wants a personal gym, he wants a sauna, he wants a bathroom, when he has three in his house, for him and his wife, and I don't think that's gonna be the case. And what's gonna happen is, if this is approved, is we're gonna have foot traffic behind our house and eyesore of a big building.
What do you mean, foot traffic behind your house?
I don't believe it's gonna be a personal use. I don't think it's gonna be just him and his wife using his personal gym. I think he's a personal trainer or in that, in that field.
Go to the slide.
And I believe he's gonna have people going back there, and he's gonna be a personal trainer in his backyard, in this facility.
Oh, let me, yeah, that's a good one. Go back, yeah. So, are you on either side? You're on this side of him?
I'm on this side.
Okay, so you're on the other side.
My fence line is next to that pool.
Okay, so this is where he wants it, okay. So, you're on the other side?
Right. I'm just going to go through my notes. Go ahead, and if you have any questions, I'm just going to make sure I get everything through because I don't want to sit down and go, darn it, I forgot to say that.
So, I have, so I have a question. So, we have a limitation. What is the limitation?
Five minutes.
Just a question for John. Conditional use permit after what size?
After twenty, twenty percent, and it's based on the square footage of the existing residential unit. So, anytime you go over the twenty percent of that existing square footage is when you require to go through a CUP process. The other, the other issue, quite frankly, we deal with is lot coverage, and because the guy's got a very large lot, he's got, you know, ample room to be able to, you know, put things on his lot, I mean, and still meet the lot coverage standards. So, really, the issue is, as been described, it was, quite frankly, that was the same issue that concerned that staff had, is that he's building a rather large structure. The original plans that were presented clearly indicated that there was going to be an upstairs area that could be used for other things, probably commercial, I, I thought, some kind of commercial use. So, that forced a redesign to the design that you see today, which doesn't have windows upstairs, doesn't have, you know, it doesn't suggest any access to the upper, upper floors. But I'll tell you, it's got a, it's got a ten-foot plate line, and it's also suggesting to have a rather large attic space that could be designed to accommodate, you know, additional space for something, storage maybe, but, you know, certainly, the concern is commercial use. You know, it's, it's interesting. Once it's, once it's, once the conditional use permit is approved, we certainly have conditions in the entitlement that suggests that it's for personal use, not for commercial use, because it's a residential neighborhood, the intent is for residential purposes, but once it's built, it's built. So, then the enforcement is that if he uses it in a commercial manner, then we deal with that as a citation, really, based on complaint basis. And, you know, theoretically, it could become a long-term issue. I was really hoping that the project proponent would be here tonight to address these issues specifically. He is. He is in the audience. Okay, good. Okay, good. There you go.
All right, and so, just let me ask you one more question. You mentioned that it was the consensus of your neighborhood and certainly yourself, that you were opposed to this because of the size of the structure and so on. So, if the structure was less square footage, would you be more comfortable with that?
The square footage is what's got the red, the red light flashing for me, thinking not personal use. Personally, if it was five hundred square foot, wants, wants something away from his house, a getaway, release, relieve some tension kind of deal, that's a little bit more, I could swallow that. I could look at that and go, okay, the guy wants, you know, a room outside to work out or whatever, or a pool room or something, you know, but, but the size is humongous. It's huge. And now seeing the picture, doesn't even look like something that should be in a backyard. And a bathroom in a building that you have a house with three bathrooms in it, to me, all the, all the bells and whistles of personal use goes out the window when I, when I read what I, what I read and the size, and nineteen by fifty-five, I wish the guy didn't have a big backyard. We wouldn't even be having this discussion because he has one of the biggest backyards in the neighborhood. Everybody knows that. So, yeah, it, the size is, the size is a major concern. The eyesight of looking at it isn't going to be appealing, but the overall people in and out of the backyard getting their workout doesn't appeal to nobody. So, that, that's my concerns, and I can't, I can't really speak for anybody else. Like I said, it's a very, very close-knit neighborhood, and I'm just kind of puzzled because I even went, made my rounds yesterday, you know, making sure everybody knew today was the day. So, that's all I got. Thank you for your time.
Is there anyone else here to speak in opposition of, of this item three point two? John, can you tell me what the square footage would be below that twenty percent?
Well, first of all, I think, I think maybe the applicant's in the audience too, so you might want to give them an opportunity to talk.
I will, but if, if you could just kind of calculate that for me.
So, if it was at twenty percent, what, what would the square footage be?
Yes, so that it would require a conditional use permit. So, is there, is the applicant here this evening? Would you like to come forward, sir?
Good evening. My name is Yuri Somoleski, and I reside at five eight oh six Alton Court. I've lived in Riverbank since I was eight years old, grew up here, my family and friends and are here, and we did a similar project back in two thousand four, I believe, and Janet should be aware of that.
Listen to the mic a little bit, yeah.
The, if you can bring up actually the floor plan of the building? When I start out with the purpose. Health, wellness, and then environmental friendly. The reason of the size, the question was brought up about the size, is to combine shed, combine the gym in one single unit. That's the purpose of this one building. The storage...
The shed, the storage.
Yeah, the storage area will solely be for tools. Half, I have a three-car garage. Right now, I only use the two cars because the third is full with saws, drills, and I have a lot of tools. So, I, I'm a handy person, I like to do stuff outside. I'm a, do nursing. Nursing, yes. But I, I mean, that's my hobby, I like to build things. The project we did before at twenty-five oh one Clay Ridge Court, two thousand four, I primarily did all that myself. It was a four hundred twenty-five square feet with a hundred and seventy square feet upstairs attic area, sort of what I'll probably end up with this, with this in here, with the attic space for storage. But the purpose of this section is for storage only, and the size of this will be nineteen by fifteen, the room itself will measure smaller with the walls being installed. So, we cannot potentially fit a car or a garage or any of that is out of the question. The gym area, the, I, I would like to shorten it. I would like to have more space for, because I have a drive-in for any potential car parkings, which is right in front of the storage. But I actually initially planned it at sixty feet, so I shortened it to fifty-five. I don't know who goes to the gym here, but typical workout station is about three feet by six feet, and measures the, the space for it needed. And I purposefully designed the windows in front facing the pool, so I can face all the gym equipment straight to the pool. And in the back-left corner, I can put a weight station gym, which right now is sitting in my living room. And my workout elliptical and a treadmill is sitting in my dining room area. I would like to get that cleared out and put in here. Like to get my garage cleared out and put it in the storage space. And the question came up about the bathroom. The bathroom is, of course, to keep the mess out of the house. That's the whole purpose of a pool. Who has a pool, they know it can get quite messy in the house with, bringing water in and things like that. That's the purpose of the bathroom, is to keep everything outside and potentially put a washer and dryer as well inside to keep it separate, not to bring the mess inside the house. And for the right corner in the gym area, that's the place for the free weights section, and all this will be cramped into. Once it all goes inside, it's the minimum space I need to fill all the equipment that I'll, I'll need to do the workout for. And a neighbor mentioned that foot traffic, how much foot traffic? I have a pool right now, so if there's any foot traffic with a pool, it would sort of correlate with this, and he can mention to you how much foot traffic I have with the pool right now, which I believe I don't have as much compared to all the pools surrounding my, my area. Almost every neighbor you noticed has a pool. My foot traffic is probably about twenty percent at tops of the foot traffic that you get around.
What type of foot traffic is that, like just...
Just our family, friends coming over and, as far as the foot traffic.
That twenty percent foot traffic?
Oh, twenty percent, I get about twenty percent foot traffic in my pool compared to the neighboring pools.
Yeah, I understand. What type of traffic is that?
It's a, I, what I see, I believe there are family and friends come in and the next, next-door neighbors. So, what I'm, what, what I mean is that we have about twenty percent of what currently of what they other have.
How tall is your house?
A house about thirty-five feet. That brings to the other point that he mentioned, come outside and see the, this in front of him. I have a row of redwoods planted right behind there, and first of all, this will, of course, be below the, the tree line, the canopy line. This will be twenty-one, I believe. I don't remember the exact number, twenty-one feet at the peak of the roof at the top. And that is below the two-story homes that are surrounding it. Each house, actually, each house that's surrounding, except for the one in the very back corner house, is a one-story, all the other ones are two-story homes, and there's a lot of two-story homes in this neighborhood. The reason for the slope is eventually I would like to do solar paneling. If you bring up, can you bring up the picture of the... That roof is purposefully sloped at the right angle for the solar panel system.
What is that going to service?
That will, hopefully, I'm hoping to service the pool. Takes a lot of, takes a lot of electricity in that, in existing house, and any electricity used at the, at the gym area and the shed, the storage area. I call it shed because that's initially what we call, I was actually corrected by Janet to classify it as accessory building. And the windows you see over there, that's for the gym and for the storage on the left. And then this storage you sometimes do, I, I may, if it's raining, I may need to cut inside, that's why I need the light for the storage area. And John mentioned about the attic, there would be an attic access with a drop-down ladder. I think that's required anyways.
So, it's going to be closed, it's going to be an attic where you would have like a roof?
Yeah.
Peak going there, so you're not going to...
Correct, yeah, inside, correct. Yeah, and I cannot even pop out any windows because I need it for paneling. So, if I wanted to, it's, the purpose of the attic is just for storage area and for the, for the slope of the panels.
Another question while you... John, did you, were you able to figure out that?
Yes, it would be at twenty percent, and the existing structure is three thousand eight hundred eleven square feet, would be about seven hundred sixty-two square feet at twenty percent.
Instead of a thousand? He's got like a thousand something square.
The proposal, again, he's going for conditional use permit because he's exceeding the twenty percent. Is it a thousand forty-five, which is what's been presented to you tonight? So, if he went to twenty percent, which didn't require CUP, then he'd be, be below seven hundred sixty-two square feet.
So, he had to be below seven hundred sixty-two?
That's right.
Have you considered that?
I have, but then I would have to build another shed in the yard, so that would be splitting the project in two.
So, what are the dimensions then of the gym itself?
The gym itself is nineteen by thirty. The, the gym itself, yes.
And you mentioned that a single space in the gym would be three feet by six feet for one person workout?
For one person, station workout, yes, for, for one machine.
So, then this could accommodate, then how many people?
This could accommodate, I mean, it's, I didn't count, I never counted as people, I counted as the machines I need. I never looked in the perspective as people.
So, could you imagine that this, this gym would ever be used at full capacity, maybe twenty people?
I don't see twenty people in there. And maximum, like a couple times a year, like most people do on holidays, get, get together, family get-together, that's the max usage I see for it, which is a couple families. And I've mentioned commercial use, I don't see any commercial use in this project at all, I don't vision, vision any commercial use in this project. And, I mean, I would like to even sign anything that, if there would be any commercial use at all, that permitted this pool, I, I'm fine with that because I don't plan any commercial use for this at all.
So, he's, he's stating that he will, would be amenable to a stipulation. Tom, can you address that?
A new condition, basically, that no commercial use will take place in the accessory facility. No commercial use will take place in the accessory building. Apparently, he's agreeing.
With regard to foot traffic, then, can we put a condition on that as well, or look at that?
Well, I have a question before we go, because what's my concern is, is exceeding the twenty percent. We have, we have a general plan in use for our city. Our city and our communities is to maintain the aesthetics, that everything looks aesthetically pleasing to the residents and everyone that lives there. When, when we look at that, we say that, you know, does everything fit the community? Because it's your property, you know, you pretty much do what you want, but, but we, we, I think here are helping to control that so that we maintain a, a harmonic living atmosphere. So, and we have rules and things like that in place, and when, and, you know, if we want to go against that, then there has to be a very, a very, I would say, strong reason to go beyond that. Okay? And, you know, a building that high, a building that large, you know, I don't know if there's going to be extra, has anybody mentioned that, you know, a, a, a land assessment review because of the property is like a thousand square feet? That's like another residence within a residence. Sort of property taxes would, you know, it seemed like it would be, you know, an extra property tax, it was an extra building. And it seems like to me, according to our general plan, that it's sort of going, it's sort of going a little bit above, above that. And I haven't heard anything as to the severity of, you know, going beyond that. I can see you need a gym, you want a gym. You want a storage area. It's fine to have that, but for us to say, okay, now you go ahead, for, for me, the way I see it, to go and build this enormous, you know, then we, we have to let everyone do it. Then all of a sudden, now the area doesn't look as it was planned to look for the city of Riverbank. You understand what I mean? So, you know, I, to me, I would personally look at, you know, is there some way that you could look into the height restrictions of it, because it looks like a two-story building, another two-story building, the length of it? Because it's going to be, if we look at the... Well, I'm, what I'm looking at, and I haven't heard, you know, even though the residents didn't look in, I'm just looking at our general plan and what we're trying to do to maintain the look of the city, is that you have the, the one where the pool where he had it marked off with the sticks? And you said you're going to have wet, redwood trees?
I have redwood trees planted.
Okay, and see here, you're going to have another house, pretty much, and then it's going to block off that, the, the look of where these, these houses are right here. You understand what I mean?
The roof peak would be below, if you notice the second-story house on the left.
And then it's not, it's enough to be attached to your, why didn't you, you know, because if you made it attached to your property, then that would be different, but this is detached. You understand? It, it's taking away from, if you look at the Google map... I'm not against what you're trying to do, I just want to make sure that our city maintains its compliances. You see how all the other buildings are looking in that area? Backyards and everything? Now, I understand you got a, a large lot. That's, that's, you know, a good thing for you, but it's going to create a different look for that particular residence if the building, the way it's designed now, is, you know, constructed at that length.
At that length, because he's trying to accommodate three different buildings with one structure.
Right, and now if you break it up, that's fine, because now you've got, you know, you don't need to... don't need the permit. But for us to say, okay, go ahead and do it, now all of a sudden later on, even though you're okay with, you know, saying it's not going to be any commercial use, you know, all it takes is for three or four people to say, hey, want to come over and use my gym? You know, and then all of a sudden, the, the residents start saying, you know, this is, this is more like a private gym, personal trainer type of thing. Now, now we get into the issue of that has to be rezoned. You see? So the way to evade all that and say within compliance is that we need to stay within our general plan unless we want to rewrite the general plan. But it's still up for vote. That's just my personal opinion.
And the recommendation of the staff is?
My recommendation is to re-review?
Yeah, excuse me.
Well, staff's recommendation was based on the lack of, of input from adjacent property owners. We've obviously been working on this application for a little bit. I mean, there's been some revisions by the project proponent to get to this point to address the issues, the very same issues that the commission's talking about tonight. It is, it is a large structure. Certainly has a large parcel, which would accommodate a larger structure. He's chosen to go beyond the 20%. Cool, that, that's all right. The process is, it's not automatic. He has to go through a conditional use permit process, which is part of this deliberation tonight. It is 22 feet in height. It does exceed the 20% standards. We have received testimony tonight from at least one of the adjacent property owners that's suggesting that it's too large and doesn't necessarily fit in with the neighborhood. So that's, you know, part of the discussion tonight and deliberation, you know, by you as the commission, based on the testimony that's been presented. We need to close the public hearing unless we're going to exceed our testimony.
Is there anyone else to speak for or against this, this item 3.2? Okay, at this time then we'll be closing the public hearing. You may be seated. Commissioners, do you have any questions for staff?
Well, my question is, is of course, is that we looked at, my, my question would be, in order for us to maintain the stakes and the, and the look and the, according to our general plan for the city of Riverbank is that we look into following the guidelines and the rules and regulations that we have set forth in front of us. Unless there is, you know, a medical, a medical reason or some, something with great emergency that, something of that is going to cause us to make an exception, that it is an exception.
Well, I mean, I think what you're referring to is if, if it was considered as a secondary unit, a secondary unit. In this case, it's not a secondary unit because it doesn't have a kitchen, it doesn't, you know, it doesn't have a defined bedroom kind of thing. It is, you know, it is what it is. It's set aside as a office storage area, excuse me, storage area, gymnasium, wet sauna, dry sauna, and restroom. All I can present is what's been presented to us.
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate, you know, you guys stole my thunder. I was going down the same pathway. You know, when you think about a, a structure that's 55 feet, 25, 22 feet tall, you, you should go out there and see what that looks like. It's huge. And I have to agree with some of the sentiments here. This is a five-foot setback. The trees, I, I think that's a good way to start with a visual barrier, but those can't be close enough where you're still going to see this massive, in my mind, it's, I would be really upset to see that going right next to my house. So, so I'm with the sentiment that I think just amassing is just, is not what it should be in this neighborhood. This is a residential neighborhood. I think the idea, I, you know, I wouldn't mind having a site in my house too. It's just the bedroom at this point. But I think in terms of what the community really should have as far as a safe, peaceful home site, I think that probably goes beyond that, that threshold. So my, my comment would be to consider an alternative design. Maybe that's not so tall and so long. 55 feet is, is pretty big. I mean, it blocks out, that's going to block out some space. So the, the use item, I think is, is a less concern for me. I think that staff has put together some pretty good conditions here that take care of any of those issues that may pertain to, you know, excessive noise, traffic, people going back and forth. That can be dealt with, you know, if there's a complaint basis. So my, my concern is you're going to see, this is going to be a permanent visual from somebody's backyard, and I think it's just out of character.
So the applicant has, has voiced that he, he wants to, to rebut. So I would have to then reopen the, the public hearing for any comments on what the commissioners just mentioned. Would you like to come up, sir?
You mentioned alternative, John. And we brought that up earlier. It would be three different buildings. And I think that would look worse than an organized, neat structure versus a shed setting on its own somewhere else. So that would be the alternative.
Well, I mean, that, that's what you, you'd have to kind of put on your Shakespeare hat, so to speak, and figure it out for us. But, I mean, as it stands, I mean, you have a pretty big backyard. I, you know, I don't know if the design would include maybe, I, I think for me, one of the things is you've got, you've got a 22, if you, 22 feet is to me kind of excessive for an accessory building.
We lowered it from, I believe, 35 for, the purpose is for sun to capture the solar panels. If I go lower, I'm not going to be able to.
Right. I understand that.
Solar system.
You know, that sometimes it's, it's a give and take. And, you know, I, I'm all for climate action plans, all that stuff. I really want that to happen. But in a situation where, you know, it's kind of at the visual expense of your neighbor, I think that concern is, is a real valid concern. And maybe the solution would be move it around somewhere on the site, you know. I'm not sure where that would be, but I think have it right up to the fence line. To me, it's, it's, I, I wouldn't want to see that, at least at that scale.
John, is there a setback from the fifth line of a structure that large?
The city's standard for R1 is five-foot setback side and rear, for that matter.
So is this setback to those dimensions?
Yes. It meets the minimum setback requirement. Yes.
But any more discussion then, for you?
Yes, I would, I'd like to ask you a question. What's the, I, I understand you want a personal workout. It's just for a personal use only?
Oh, yes, for personal family and?
It's you and your wife, you, your wife, children or?
Yes.
And you guys just need this, this big, huge gym to stay physically fit? Okay.
I mean, I, I like space. I like to have extra space. That's why I bought the largest lot. That's why I have, like my neighbor mentioned, for two of us, the house.
One thing, I don't know if your realtor ever told you, is that you could have the biggest lot in the smallest community, and your lot is only worth what the community is worth?
I realize that. I'm not raising the value.
I understand that. So you do have a large lot, but then you, you know, you have to look and say, what, what can I do with it within regulations or limitations? You see, because the largest lot, I mean, you can do the biggest things. Makes sense?
Have, have you had discussions with your neighbors at all?
Actually, the five-foot line, he's a pastor, he lives next door, and I've mentioned this from when I moved in, two and a half years ago. And I've been talking about it since then. So he's well aware of it, and that's, I believe that's been the most bothering neighbor that would see it, that would have the sore eye when he comes out, the next door property. And the property behind the neighbor that's present, there's already redwoods, I believe about 12 feet high at least. And he has his own redwoods aligned too. So I believe he likes to view with the redwoods that we have.
So is there any modification that you can consider then? Or are these the plans as you, as you've presented that you wish us to, to vote on this evening?
I wish to vote on these plans. I don't have a detailed proposal for any, for any alternative. I would have to redesign, redesign something for that. But it would probably be splitting it in two to three sections.
Would that be something that you would be open to, to get some type of approval or not even bring it back for a conditional use permit based on the square footage being decreased?
That, that would, I, I don't want to put any other structures near other neighbors. That would put structures, it would put a structure in the back, in the very corner, and that would be an issue to other neighbors. And the adjacent neighbor that is aware of the, has been aware since the purchase of the house, he knew a while along what I'm planning to do, so that's why I'm?
He's not here this evening?
Uh, he's not here, no.
Why does it have to be so tall?
Uh, for solar. So, because the tree line?
Does it have to be that tall for solar? Because it doesn't look like anything's blocking it from the sky. Because solar, the sun's going to go across the top. So even if it's on the ground, you're still going to get solar energy.
It, it's the angle. I have a 10-foot ceiling inside the gym.
What?
That's the angle, 10-foot ceiling inside the gym, and the roof pitch starts at the?
That's what I'm saying. It's going to have to be a give and take. Okay? Because right now you want it to be 22 high because of solar. But we're telling you that it's just, this aesthetics of it is just going to trash the area. It's going to make it look like it's a, you know, a, a place with an out-of-place thing in there. Nothing around it looks similar. There's no like properties around it once you do that. So then it started, it brings everybody, it puts everybody else's property value in question because yours now is throwing everything off. But if it, if it was some way like the commissioner was saying, that you could re, go back to the review, maybe shortening, shortening the top so that it's not so tall, but then you still have that long length where you got your storage, you've got all your windows, everything's facing the pool, looking out at it, you know, you can go work out and everything, and you don't have this big extra, it looks like, in-law quarters.
So I'm, I'm going to ask John a question then. What is the, what would be the procedure if, if this gentleman did not get the votes tonight? Would he have to reapply at another date? And is there additional cost to that? Or if we tabled this and he went back and looked at his plans again for some type of modification, then he wouldn't have to reapply?
So you're asking me, what are the options that we have tonight? One option might be that he revises his project to meet the standard, so it's 20% or less, and then he just applies for building permit. So redo, redo, reduce the size of the structure. That's one. Two is the commission can act tonight on what's been presented tonight, which is what he's suggesting. The commission's action is advisory. He certainly has the ability to appeal that decision to city council. Or, and/or, the commission could grant a continuance of this item to afford the project proponent to make revisions to his project to adhere to the concerns that have been expressed tonight. And that the commission at that time could deliberate on a modified project.
Okay.
So those are the options as I see them.
Okay. Very good, John. So hearing those, sir, are any of those other options something that you would consider?
It has been modified, the height reduced from 35 to 22 feet. So we already did modifications. And for a shed, the minimum is, I mean, the maximum is 15, I believe. So that's seven feet above that.
But on the shed, you have to be set back further with the height. You could be five feet from the property line, only with a seven and a half foot lift line. And then you have for each foot, you step back, you could go a foot and a half tall. So then you can add six feet to go up to eight feet, or eight, nine feet. So two more feet.
So we still have a public hearing that's open? And there may be others in the audience that want, want to talk as well?
Then, then sir, is there anything in conclusion you'd like to say or? Of us consider? Is there anything else?
Uh, not at this time.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak?
Couple more notes, I'm still sitting down. I just want to make it quick and let you guys know that I think two of the council members stated that it doesn't fit in the neighborhood. And I couldn't have said that better because it's, once you said that, it just rang a bell. That's the perfect way to describe this whole project. It does not fit in this neighborhood. It's just humongous. I mean, there's other big backyards in this neighborhood. Another guy shares his fence line also has a pool, but if you notice on the other side is a pool, his side yard is humongous. So what, what stops him from wanting to build a thousand-square-foot, whatever he would want to call it? It just takes away from the, it's, they're track homes. Everybody bought them. They all look nice and symmetrical. You know, every three houses, it's the same house, but looks different. And then we're going to have this warehouse look and commercial look and building in somebody's backyard. It doesn't, it doesn't, doesn't appeal to me at least. I can't say to everybody because they're not here. And he mentioned, he mentioned the, the neighbor on the other side that hasn't had a problem with them, mentioned it two and a half years ago. He's not going to know what this structure is going to look like until he comes out and it's framed. And then he ain't going to see nothing coming out from the, he's going to come out of his backyard and he's going to see that, is what he's going to see. I'm going to come out of my backyard and I'm going to see this from my angle. But those, we're not the only two people in this neighborhood that are going to see this big structure. There's houses on the back end of his backyard, there, all those houses right there are going to see this structure. So it's just not, it's not the, it's just not my property and, and the guy next to him that is okay with this project, so. Thank you, that's all I had.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? And we will close the public hearing. Commissioners, any, any more discussion? Any more questions? May I hear a motion from the floor?
I have a motion to, to disapprove. Item, was it item? What item is it? Item 3.2.
So we have a, we have a nay vote from one commissioner?
I second that.
Okay, so no motion then on the floor? No motion? Not approved?
Not approved.
Okay. We'll call?
Vice Chair Hughes? Commissioner McKenney?
No.
If I, you voted no on your motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes on my motion. Okay, I guess we want to?
Expends the vote.
I voted no on the item, so let's go back and expends the vote.
It was a motion to not approve.
Motion to not approve. Okay, go ahead and go through your motion points again then.
Vice Chair Hughes?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenney? And Commissioner Dagley?
Yes.
We have the attorney here.
10-day appeal period, right?
Yes.
10-day appeal period. So what's the, what would the date be?
May 31st.
May 31st.
Okay, so moving forward then to item 3.3. Architecture and Site Plan Review 02-2014, Resolution 2014-008. Silicon Container Inc. to construct a detached 19,800-square-foot steel building for can storage in the southern portion of the site. John?
Yeah, Madam Chairperson, members of the commission, this is an architectural site plan review, Silicon Container, wanting to add basically a 20,000-square-foot steel metal building for can? Uh, wanting to add basically a twenty thousand square-foot, uh, steel metal building for can, can storage. Uh, the project, project's off of Patterson Road. It's zoned, uh, light industrial designated by the general plan is light industrial as well. Um, we've got applicant representative Reggie, uh, project manager for Silgan Foods, uh, Brian Miller, both of which have been actively engaged in this application process. Um, the project is a ministerial project as defined. Um, we have presented a draft planning commission resolution as attachment number one. That's twenty dash, um, twenty fourteen dash zero-zero-eight. Uh, staff is recommending approval of this architectural site plan, um, project. There's an executive summary that presents the project in, in greater detail. Uh, site analysis and also a discussion on, uh, transportation. Um, and, and of course, agency comments. The findings and whatnot are in the package. So the, this is a, a picture of where the project's located. Let's go to a couple more slides here, Janet. Um, again, this is existing operation, Silgan Container there on Patterson Road. Uh, location of where, um, the proposed structure would be located. Let's go to the next. So this is a, uh, site plan. Um, the, the structure is, it would be proposed in behind the existing Silgan Container facility. Uh, the site was gravelled, uh, dirt, um, a portion of it, in fact, most of it now is, uh, received concrete treatment. Access is, is pretty much direct. Um, it is located quite a distance away from Patterson Road. It's kinda difficult to see it, you know, traveling along Patterson Road. Um, so it's, it is somewhat hidden. Um, the site drainage, it was an issue initially, but they're dealing with it on-site. Um, and they're gonna be presenting as a condition of their, uh, pro, uh, project approval, um, all the percolation information that they need in order to make sure that all the site drainage is contained on the property specifically. Um, the project proponents have presented, um, statement of findings in support of their application that can be found on page one oh-two. And that's a letter that was addressed to us March eleventh, two thousand fourteen. Um, additional detail relative to, um, potential stormwater retention on the site is presented starting on page one oh, one oh-four is attachment four. Um, site plans. We've got copies of, um, photographs. We got some other slides. Uh, this is the can storage, again, a metal structure. Um, I gotta go back. In your agenda packages, um, starting on page one sixteen are some more, um, pictures of what they're proposing. And then, of course, we've got, um, color schemes which pretty much match what they're presenting. So industrial operation, um, pretty consist, obviously very consistent with what's going on in the area. Uh, Silgan Container is a, a, a big employer within this community. We're glad to have them, I can tell you that. Um, there's an issue, um, relative to some of the, the driveways that currently access out onto Patterson Road. Those driveways apparently don't meet eight current ADA standards. The value of the project that they wanna, uh, construct exceeds the city's mandated, um, ten thousand square, ten thousand dollar threshold. Um, however, because the city is working on securing, uh, CMAC funds for roadway improvements between Rozell and First Street, actually Rozell First, actually Rozell the Third. Uh, we're confident that we'll be able to fold those, um, fold those new driveways into that construction project. So that's kind of our, our, our approach to help resolve an issue that's out there now. Uh, we feel that's the right thing to do. Um, and resolve, you know, the, the issue relative to the fact that the driveways are a little bit steeper than they should be. Um, other than that, it's standard architectural site plan review, um, nothing, uh, out of the ordinary. We have, again, um, sent out notices to all property owners within three hundred feet of this application. And we've received to date no, uh, responses, either in writing or verbally, um, either for or against this project. So staff has recommended approval of the, uh, architectural site plan as presented to you tonight. Um, that resolution twenty fourteen dash zero-zero-eight is presented on page ninety-six. Are there any, any questions? Okay, thank you.
Public hearing for comment? Is there anyone here, uh, for this project that would like to speak?
Good afternoon. Uh, my name is Reggie Kazakian. Uh, my address is seven thirty-five North Fine Road, Linden, California. And I'm the consultant contractor for Silgan Container. And I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
How much extra traffic or is gonna be, um, incurred? Because you're, right now, where are they storing their, these are gonna be like finished, what are they, tin cans?
Yes, sir.
And they're gonna be stored at this existing warehouses, which you're-
This project, the purpose for this project, Commissioner, is actually to take trucks off the road. Uh, right now, if you will, the product is created, they make about three million cans a day. And the product has no room on-site to store. So every can created today is trucked out immediately to a facility on Rozell. Um, so there are trucks there constantly picking up these cans, taking them around to Rozell and unloading them, waiting for a load to be built at large enough to deliver to one of the local canneries. So by the creation of this project, we're actually gonna take trucks, probably forty or fifty trucks a day off the road. Because they're now gonna just come on a given day to take the cans to the consumer. So they're not gonna have to transport them around the corner for storage. So actually reduction, I don't know how many, but forty?
Yeah, your estimate of-
The two of the, two of the gentlemen from Silgan are project managers are here tonight with me and might answer some questions. But I would say I've been there while we've done other projects. And there are probably forty big trucks a day that just come pick up cans and take them next door. And so that's gonna go away.
What happens if they're building on Rozell?
Well, it'll, it'll continue to get cans when they're loading this building for an immediate delivery. Then this, they would go here and then they would go out. If there's more production and this can building fills up, they're still gonna use that building.
Looking at traffic go-
There will be traffic, but there'll be less traffic.
How many cans will the new-
The facility hold?
Let me, let me calculate and I'll, let me think.
That's a good question. A lot.
They have a facility in Modesto.
They have three facilities in Modesto.
They do the same thing?
They do the same thing. Most of the cans-
They don't transport product to and from Modesto.
I'm not particularly familiar with the operation of Silgan Container, but I've been to two of their sites. And this one and the one on, uh, Yosemite do not store cans on-site.
My name is Brian Miller. Um, I'm project engineer for Silgan Containers. If you need my address, I live in Modesto. Um, but I am the project engineer for the west coast of Silgan. Um, we do have three other facilities here in Modesto. We have one on Riverside Drive, one on Doherty Drive, and we have one on Yosemite Drive. Uh, each facility produces a different product for different customers. And we do ship to those, but what we ship to the other facilities are the ends, were the lids, for their cans, cause they do not have a, an end production facility. This particular plant produces all of the ends for the, um, both our plants as well as the end that the customer will seam on. This will go to Del Monte, this will go to Nestle, um, Conagra, Seneca, Hormel, various customers. As far as how-
So is this gonna be, so this is, stuff's gonna be produced at Riverbank, the ends you're talking about?
Well, we produce more than that, just cans. We're gonna store cans in this particular facility.
They'll store cans here? Are those cans to use at those other facilities you were mentioning?
No. The other facilities produce their own cans.
So this, this particular facility here is just gonna be producing? You just wanna shorten the distribution or lead time? Is, is that what you're looking at?
We currently, if a customer calls for an order, we build their order from the Rozell warehouse. If we have a short lead time, we still have to truck even a short lead time order over to Rozell. But if we have a customer that has an order that we need to deliver, say at the end of the week, we produce three million cans a day, we can produce those, store them here and produce that load for the customer from here. And it never has to be shipped to the Rozell warehouse. It'll go from here to our customer. So it won't eliminate, we've, we've never proposed that we're gonna eliminate the traffic over to Rozell. It will definitely diminish the, uh, the traffic to Rozell.
So you'll be able to-
Cause it won't be going back and forth as much, just-
Correct.
Housed at the one facility.
Forklift traffic will take it to this facility for a short-term storage, weekly, maybe two weeks, load from there and go straight to the customer. Long-term storage will still be stored in Rozell. We make cans for next year. We're already making cans for next year for some of the customers.
You just need to put it. Exactly. You took the word joke out of my mouth. So the intent is just to have space for over, overrun or more, um, orders to accommodate those.
For temporary short-term orders, yes.
Immediately, because you don't have storage.
Correct.
If a customer wants to get a discount, they could order a whole lot and then have it shipped periodically?
I'm, uh, doesn't quite work that way. But if, if, say Nestle, um, we need to supply fifty truckloads of a, of a baby milk can and we need to supply that at the end of the week, then instead of shipping it over to Rozell and waiting and building the load there, we'll, on a forklift, truck it over to this on-site location, a forklift.
You're gonna drive a forklift down the-
On our property. So again, that's what I'm saying, no truck traffic. We're taking trucks off the road. Forklift will store it in this temporary storage building. Truck will come by at the end of the week, we'll load it from there and then that truck will go to Nestle. Where we currently will load that truck, they'll drive to Rozell, drive back to pick up another load, drive back around, drive back over.
You have to hire new people?
Do we have to hire new people to do this? No.
Doesn't, it doesn't increase any, any, any jobs?
Forklift driver, maybe. We'll have to see. As of right now, we think we can do it with our, the current staffing. But, uh, depending on the traffic of, um, forklift traffic here, how long it takes them to ship out, we may add one per shift. That would be three, potentially. But, uh, it, it's not in the plan. It's not currently in our capital budget to add labor.
So it's actually an improvement for the greening of Riverbank?
Correct.
Well, also the, the CMAC funds are part of that too. So that's from the air district. I had a question on that. Are we, if I could, um, is that, the curb gutter sidewalk is gonna be the CMAC concept?
Well, again, um, they currently have curb gutter and sidewalk there. Sidewalk that they have is an asphalt sidewalk. It works. That's not the issue. The issue is that there's been changes in federal standard and relative to slope of the curb cuts themselves. So it's because, and it's not by a great percentage, but unfortunately it doesn't meet ADA standards. So what we're saying is, okay, um, you know, we're gonna be doing a CMAC project. We're applying for funds. We're gonna be doing a bunch of work in that area. It's likely that we'll be dealing in the right of way and affecting these, these curb cuts, these driveways anyway. So we can fold that into our project.
We're actually saving someone some money?
Well, I mean, it could be seen both ways, but the reality is, the way that the, our code is written, if the investment is more than ten thousand dollars in a project, then it has to meet these new standards. So we're, we're trying, we're trying to work with them. That's the bottom line.
Cause right now they have a asphalt, so there's nowhere-
Well, no, they had, the, the driveway approaches themselves are actually concrete. The only thing that's asphalt is, is sidewalk, which is fine. There's no issue with that. It's just the, it's just the, um, the driveways are a little steeper than they should be. Not by a great percentage, but they are, they are steeper.
But this is a, would this be considered a capital improvement?
Well, I mean, it's pretty complicated, but, um, it's not actually a CIP-funded project. It's actually through another, another fund that's administered by, um, StanCog. And it's called CMAC funds. So that's what we're gonna be applying for. It's already in the works. It's been in the works for over a year.
The drainage pond, what's gonna happen with that runoff?
Well, the drainage pond will be created just to the west of the new building. Uh, it'll be sixty by sixty, I believe, four and a half feet deep. Um, we will do some testing when we dig it to make sure that the soil percolates properly. There is a layer of hardpan, um, at about a foot deep. But we believe that we, we're digging four and a half feet deep, we're gonna break through that hardpan and the soil-
That for, that pond.
Pardon me?
Pond, what do you need it for?
Uh, the, so there's a calculation as to the size of the roof of the building and the rainwater that will attract falling on the roof. And so instead of it just falling on the ground and percolating into the ground as it's done for years, um, it's going to now not, it's gonna hit the roof and go somewhere. So we're gonna collect it in storm drain pipes and take it over to the west end of the building and discharge it into a pond, so.
You guys use, I know for cutting metal and stuff, there's some kind of solvent or something like that? Oh, you guys don't use, uh, nothing like that for laser cutting like?
We don't laser cut.
Are you talking about the cans or the building?
No, I'm talking about the cans. I'm talking about the production.
No solvent's used for the production of the cans for, for cutting. There's no laser cutting. It, it's mechanically cut and it's a dry-
Is it just like punched?
Uh, you're, different processes. To produce the can body, it's, it's a mechanical dry cut on a, a process called a slitter. And it's two very, um, pieces of carbide that spin close to each other and that cuts the, uh, the can body. The ends are punched out with a, a press. Again, it's a dry process.
This pond is just for rainwater?
Rainwater.
Storm water?
Yes, sir.
And there will be no settling of water where you start getting these mosquitoes and things and algae and everything wants to-
No, Silgan, Silgan has a full-time regional environmental consultant that travels to each site, I would say, monthly?
Weekly, currently.
Weekly. So he travels to every site weekly to make sure that every Silgan factory is in compliance with EPA. It's a big deal. So they are very conscious of it.
So the front, the fr, I'm just, I'm cutting you off right now.
Just their five minutes is passed. But go ahead and complete your, your question.
No, I, no, you go ahead. That's it.
Okay, what, is there anything else, gentlemen?
There's, I was just here to answer your questions. I don't-
Is there anything else?
No more questions.
Anthony, I know you had one. Go ahead and finish that.
No, I'm just saying, cause I think John probably can answer that question. It's gonna be the front of, I guess, cause leave it open for the floor, I guess, so they can comment.
Is, please. Oh, I'm sorry.
The front, okay, well, you have like a smoking area. That's right in front of there. You have a few trees, right? So improvement of that particular area doesn't fall into this new construction?
Well, I mean, um, you know, gosh, you know, we're doing an architectural site plan review on a pretty minor expansion to a rather large existing operation. So we try to be cognizant of the fact that we're really analyzing a very small aspect of the project. Um, it's actually hidden. Um, we really don't try to address other related aspects. If they were doing other facade improvements or something else to the main structure, then we might talk about maybe getting some more landscaping improvements out in front. But at this point, I think we're, we're, we're in good shape. You know, um, again, they're a pretty substantial employer in the community. We're glad they're here and we wanna continue to work with them, so.
Got any other questions, gentlemen? Thank you very much at this time. Is there anyone else to speak for this project or against this project? Would like to close the public hearing then? Commissioners, do you have any questions for staff?
No questions for me.
None? Then we'll move forward.
The resolution I prepared for you tonight is, again, found on page ninety-six.
Um, I'm looking then for a motion for, uh, the, uh, resolution number two zero one four dash zero zero eight.
Yeah. I move that we approve resolution number two fourteen zero zero eight, adopting the architectural site plan application review to develop a nineteen thousand eight hundred square-foot building. The site is currently zoned M-one, light industrial with the general plan zone of industrial business park.
I second it.
Vice Chair Hughes? Commissioner McKenney?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving forward to item three point four, CX dash one, mixed-use zoning resolution two thousand fourteen dash zero zero five. This project consists of a zoning ordinance amendment to establish the mixed-use CX dash one zoning district as chapter one five-three, section one six-six through one seventy-two. And language amendment to section one- as Chapter 153, Section 166 through 172, and language amendment to Section 153.010, et cetera. John?
Yeah, Madam Chairperson, members of the Commission, this is a continued item. This is the mixed-use zoning ordinance that we've talked about for a little bit now. At our last meeting of April 15th, the Commission specifically asked staff to present some additional information relative to the types of buildings that you might see in a mixed-use development, either vertical or horizontal. So you've got pictures of those. So this would be an example of a, of a vertical mixed-use type of development. And this would be, there we go, kind of a, this would be more of an example, more horizontal. So you'd have, you know, commercial and then residential behind, but yet still on the same parcel. So there's that. We've also, we have another exhibit, there's another one of horizontal. What do we got for other questions? And the other was to present an exhibit showing a map of mixed-use properties in the city of Riverbank. So I have done that. There's a large, large-scale map. I don't think it's on the screen, but it's in your packages, which shows the remaining parcels that are designated mixed-use per the general plan that was ultimately adopted in '09 and recognizes the changes that this commission took in the last four or five months to clean up some of the mixed-use designations that were on commercially designated and zoned properties like Brian's Market, Galaxy Theater, et cetera. So, yeah, so that's, so that's that. The Environmental Review Committee, which is part of our ordinance code, met, considered the environmental document that staff had presented on this particular project. The committee met on May 13th and did recommend that initial study and EGDEC could be filed for this project. So that step was satisfied. The language that we presented back in April to the Commission remains the same. We've had, you know, ample opportunity, I think, for the general public to present any comments or concerns they have regarding this item. We plan on sending this on to the City Council should the Commission choose to, to vote in favor of this proposed ordinance to their, some meeting in June, I don't exactly have a date on me right now. Obviously, we'll have to go through all the public notice procedures, et cetera, for that as well. The, the suggested ordinance is, again, that suggested ordinance that was shown in Exhibit A of our staff report on April 15th, and it's included in that, was included in that April 14th package as Page 86. So I really don't have anything more, more to say unless the Commission has any comments regarding this item specifically. We did renotice this item again in the, in the local paper, so it's, we actually received a double notice because the last time we considered this item by the Commission on April 15th, we were gonna, we had purposely continued, left the public hearing open to our next regular scheduled meeting, and because we had an adjustment to our regular scheduled meeting to this special planning commission meeting, we renoticed it. So, I mean, we've met all the legal requirements relative to that, so. Yeah, I don't know what else to say other than.
Well, I've got a, I'd like to actually ask a question there, John.
Sure, go right ahead.
On the, this downtown area, I can't remember why, there's a certain, right next to the church property on.
Yep.
Why would this taken, is that church property? Can't remember. It's to the south side of, what's that road?
Atkinson, or you're thinking of Calendar?
I'm thinking of Calendar on that. Okay, there's the east side there, right, you know where the church?
North of Topeka.
North, south of Topeka.
And east, south of Topeka.
Is that Topeka?
Yes, that would be Topeka, yes.
Yeah, there's about, two, four, six, about 10 small lots in there.
Yes, yes, yes.
That does not appear in this map. That doesn't look like it's.
It's not designated mixed-use now.
I can't remember. It seemed like that there's an unusual cutoff because you've got an intersection that seemed like a.
Right.
Likely spot to have a mixed-use there, but.
Well, again, you know, I've discussed this before, but we're, we're currently updating the downtown specific plan. Let me back up. We don't have a downtown specific plan. We're currently redrafting the downtown specific plan to address a number of issues. And one of those issues is making sure that the land use assumptions in that document are consistent with the goals and objectives of the general plan, the goals and objective of the downtown specific plan, and the goals and objectives of those individual property owners. And there are gonna be some changes to the land uses that are suggested in the downtown specific plan as part of that discussion. In all likelihood, that will drive changes to the general plan land use designations as part of a separate action. But that's not what we're considering tonight. The exhibit that's in your package is there for illustrative purposes, so you understand which properties in the city are currently designated mixed-use. To go back over the process again, once the city has a mixed-use zone in its ordinance, once we have a zoning that's created, then we intend to contact, discuss, deliberate with those property owners that are currently mixed-use and give them options describing to them the differences between their current zoning and what the mixed-use zone would be on their property and how would it affect them. And either rezone their property to mixed-use as part of a future action, or suggest a redesignation of the general plan to some other designation. So that's part of another work program that's down the line. So this, this action doesn't rezone anybody's property. This action just creates a mixed-use zone, which is consistent with one of the action policies that are part of the adopted general plan.
Here, let me see if I can, can we phrase it so I can maybe soak it in a little bit deeper? The staff, city's gonna talk to some of these folks that have these properties, or is it all the?
All of them.
Properties, okay. And give them the option?
Yep, have to, have to.
Okay, so at this time, would I like to open up the public hearing? Is there anything that we'd like to speak for or against? There's probably three points.
Okay. When this was originally noticed, there was one notice posted in Modesto at the Recorder's Office. It was never posted or published in Riverbank, that there was an initial study, that there was a, they were working on a negative declaration, that there was a comment period, nothing. Oh, Evelyn, Evelyn Halbert. Out of downtown Riverbank, I should be good. Okay. No, we're scratching. It was never posted or published in Riverbank, in the city, that there was an initial study, that there was negative declaration proposal, that there was a comment period, nothing. It was only posted in Riverbank. That notice listed a comment period of April 4th, 2014 to May 4th, 2013, and it listed the hearing date as May 20th, 2014, which was yesterday, okay? Yeah, you did post in the paper a notice of this meeting, but it did not say there was a comment period in there. And I believe the SEQA Code 21092 gives you instructions on posting and noticing in the city. I mean, that's what SEQA is all about, is public, public participation, which you're not gonna get if nobody knows about it. The, on the initial study, negative declaration, it states, there's a section here that states that the city's general plan, which was adopted April 2009, modify the general plan use designation of numerous properties within the city to mixed-use. This proposed ordinance will serve as the inflammation tool for that mixed-use designation. When this general plan update was done, there was no notices put out to property owners about this mixed-use at all. Because, and the reason they did not notify us is because the intent of the general plan was that the existing neighborhoods would not be mixed-use. And I'll get to that in a minute. Also, an initial study, it also states on Page 10, 1C, the establishment of a CX-1 zone will not affect any properties with this designation immediately. It will eventually. So does that mean eventually, somebody's gonna let us in on this, or are we gonna, I mean, that's kind of a vague statement, because your initial study is showing no impacts, and yet you're saying, yeah, eventually there'll be impacts. Are you gonna go back and do another initial study when, when you decide to put us mixed-use? About the impacts? Because you haven't done it yet. The general plan, when it was done, if you look at the land use element on Land 8, it states that the plan, general plan, does not envision that existing neighborhood would be removed to accommodate the new development. In order to be consistent with the balance of the policy, certain residential neighborhoods within a mixed-use designation would not experience land change during this general plan update. It also states that, as described in policy, the city is committed to preserving the quality of life in existing parts of the city. But none of this language is in this zone, this mixed-use zone. When they did the EIR, or the general plan for this land use, they very specifically stated under the impact 411, regarding disrupting or dividing established communities, the city's definition of the mixed-use designation, and this is in quotes, quote, "The city's definition of the mixed-use designation clarifies that existing neighborhoods would be preserved and the focus in existing developed parts of the city will be on vacant or underutilized properties, not in the established neighborhood", unquote, "not in the established neighborhoods." And that is why the EIR shows the impact was less than significant, because they did not intend to put mixed-use in our existing neighborhoods. With this zoning change, the way it's written, it's gonna put impacts on us that were never studied. Plus, you have a general plan map that shows a large area of downtown, including our existing neighborhoods, as mixed-use. But the verbiage in that general land use, the general plan, does not. That's a conflict. The verbiage states that we will not be mixed-use, but the map shows us mixed-use. And that conflict needs to be straightened out first. Now, as far as this vacant and underutilized properties, it states under the implementation strategy that the committee developed apartment well-maintained inventory of vacant and underutilized land. They don't have one. Doesn't exist. At least that's what I've been told when I ask. Being a resident down here, owning property in an existing neighborhood downtown, this is totally, I don't know what you call it. It's totally unfair to us because we were never included before. We've never been included in a specific plan. Right now, you're doing a general plan ordinance zoning change. They did not do any studies on us at that time because, as I read to you, we were not gonna be impacted by mixed-use. Now, all of a sudden, we're gonna be mixed-use and we're still not getting any notices.
Is that to conclude what you wanted to say this evening? Because we're, you've hit your time limit.
Yeah.
I'm gonna ask John to address some of these questions that she brought up and to provide some clarity to the commissioners this evening with regard to her, her testimony from this gentlelady resident of Riverbank.
So is the public hearing closed or open?
Public hearing will be closed at this time.
Okay.
Further opposition or for this project?
I got a couple of points of clarification. One is that regarding this whole notice situation, you know, whenever we deal with any type of project, there are a number of different noticing requirements that we deal with. We deal with noticing requirements of adjacent property owners. We deal with noticing requirements in the paper of local circulation. Sometimes we'll notice it in the Riverbank News, sometimes we'll notice it in Modesto B, depending on what's happening, staff loads, whether people are on vacation, whatever. We do the best we can to meet the statutory requirements. Whenever we have a SEQA document, in this case, we're suggesting initial study, we're required by law to post that SEQA document as a notice of intent with the county clerk's office. We did that. We met that legal requirement. That is not a requirement where you need to post it anywhere in Riverbank. We post it with clerk's office. So when this project ultimately is acted upon and approved, we'll end up filing with a call and notice of determination. That will be filed not in Riverbank, it'll be filed with the county clerk's office. It'll be a 30-day review of that NOD and affords anybody the ability to legally challenge what we've just done, okay? That's the law. That's, we follow that. I'm gonna get beyond that. As it relates to the downtown specific plan area and those properties within the downtown specific plan area, presuming that the downtown specific plan is ultimately adopted and acted upon by the city council, the downtown specific plan will govern all land use decisions within the downtown specific plan area as defined by the plan that's ultimately adopted by the city council, okay? Staff will not suggest to come in and rezone any of those properties within those defined boundaries to a mixed-use zone. This mixed-use zone really only applies to those property, or would apply to those properties outside of the downtown specific plan area boundary that are designated on an adopted general plan as mixed-use. Plain and simple. If the downtown specific plan is not adopted, and we have properties, a number of which, in the downtown area, that are designated mixed-use on the adopted general plan, as I've stated earlier, we will go to those property owners and afford them the opportunity to understand and deliberate on this mixed-use zone versus some other zone that may be consistent with what their long-term goals are for that property. So after having said that, I really don't have any other comments.
Anyone else like to speak, or rebut? Hold on. Let me reopen the public hearing then. But you don't have much time, ma'am.
Okay, I just, I'm confused. The general plan, verbiage says, these neighborhoods are not mixed-use. The map says they are. Is that not a conflict from a legal point of view? The verbiage in the land use element of the general plan very clearly states that existing neighborhoods would not be, the general, not put mixed-use in existing neighborhoods, they would be preserved. The general plan map has a mixed-use. Is that not a conflict? Does that not need to be addressed?
I mean, theoretically, it could be, but I mean, I'd have to look at, I'm not. Yeah.
So if the, if.
That's not, can I clarify? That is not what we're considering tonight. It is absolutely not what we're considering tonight.
If this, the specific plan does not go through, this rezone does not go through, where does that leave these neighborhoods? Are we now mixed-use? Will we be mixed-use if there's no specific plan?
That's also not before you. Again, it's just the ordinance regarding recommendation on an ordinance providing for a mixed-use.
If you put the zoning, mixed-use zoning verbiage in the zoning right now, so that there is a mixed-use zoning in our city code, okay? And if somebody comes in and wants to develop, they're gonna look at the general plan map. Okay, that's mixed-use. Okay, there's zoning mixed-use in here. They're gonna go for it. If they've got property, they're gonna go for it. And that's gonna be right in our existing neighborhoods. It opens the door without giving us a chance, without, you know, we have no say-so because somebody just opens the door and somebody come in and buy property and there goes our neighborhood. You just told this other guy that, back here, about his neighborhood and how, you know, you should preserve it, shouldn't put things like, what the, stuff like that in it. Now you're turning right around and telling those of us to live downtown. So what? It is. If you put this zoning code in there, it opens the door for developers to come in and zone and put mixed-use in our existing neighborhoods. You're opening the door.
Thank you so much for your good point and all the pleasure of the public hearing. Any questions for staff?
No, not for me.
Okay. So at this point, then, we'll be looking for a motion for item 3. So at this point, then, we'll be looking for a motion for item three.
What is this? I don't know what this is.
I don't know what that is.
They were submitted after the public hearing was closed. They were submitted after the public hearing was closed.
I'm sorry, I apologize, but the, the, the public hearing was closed. So, so right now, we're, we're going to, we're going to take a vote on item three point four. We're looking for a motion for item three point four CX one mixed use zoning resolution two zero one four dash zero zero five.
I, I move to approve. What are we approving, to send it up to council?
Yes.
I, I move to approve to send item...
Resolution two fourteen zero zero five.
Resolution two fourteen zero zero five, did I get that right?
Yes.
Okay.
I would second that.
We'll call vote? Yes.
Yes. Thank you.
I don't have any business.
Number five, Commission items, information only, no action. Item five point one, feedback for the planning commissioners on the St. Louis County Planning Director's Annual Planning Commissioners Workshop that was held on May tenth, two thousand fourteen, in Oakdale, California.
Very good, I attended that meeting, very informative. I believe it was a big wake-up call for what we need to do as a city to maintain and sustain our existing water supply and resources. I look forward to attending the next one.
I agree, I think that, I think the, our staff representative did a good job in seeing the presentation, I think the, the speakers were really, really fantastic. I have to agree with everyone I spoke with enjoyed, I, I learned a lot.
He was one of the best that I've been to, and I, I have been so, to so many of them now that...
I'm glad to hear that, I mean, hopefully you had a chance to, you know, give some feedback on it because as we build, you know, ideas for next year's planning commissioners workshop, I mean, the whole intent is that you guys are taking time out of your day on a Saturday, you know, we want to make sure that it's worthwhile, you know? So if it's a topic that you guys are interested in, you know, we need to know about that so we can plan for next year and get some world, you know, get some really good speakers like we had this time that, you know, are knowledgeable, you know, and, and local, of course, right, local? And they can share their views.
Well, I thought the topic was hot, and I think that primarily that's the reason why you had such a great attendance.
Good, thank you.
And, and it was captivating, you know, it held your attention.
Good.
Something that people didn't want to hear about and we were doing it, and they were really engaged. And it's so important to us and for the future here in the valley, definitely. So, kudos, kudos for a great workshop, thanks.
Thanks, I'll, I'll share that with the other directors.
Thanks, too.
I will, I will. And the question and answer, I think that worked out well, too, where we collected the cards and then went back through, saved time, right? And went back through those, went back through those at the end. I think that was good, that way you didn't have one individual kind of control all the questions and everyone equally had an opportunity to raise issues or concerns.
And your, and your speakers also had a bit of an opportunity to
Look at them.
to review the questions so that they kind of had an idea in their mind how they wanted to answer them, which is so important because sometimes there's something quick like that, exchanged very quick, they can't get what they really want to say out.
Awesome.
So it was really great all the way around.
So, number six, county referral correspondence information, information only, no action, item six point one.
Yeah, we have a, it's a, it's a minor project, it's a general plan amendment, rezone. It's actually an existing RV storage area. It's owned and managed by Bright Transportation. It's at the northwest corner of Claus and Clarabelle. It's an application that's being processed through the county because it's in the county, it's in the city of Riverbanks S O Y. They have to comply with all of our development standards relative to right-of-way and landscaping and all those kinds of things. So it's already built into it. No proposal to annex, obviously, because it would be a spot annexation, if you will, because there's a number of other properties in that area that have to be annexed as well. So, yeah, so it's county project, county referral. It's actually a project, I believe, that J D Hightower had been working with the project proponents on for a while, but anyway. That's it.
Upcoming immediate agenda items, seven point one.
Yeah, I'm not sure, this, this is a project that's been worked on quite a bit, you know, by the project proponents, staff's had, you know, a little bit of input. It doesn't sound as if that the site that they have will work for the type of business that they're suggesting. And I think it has a lot to do with economics because of handicap parking standards and other things that they'll have to deal with. We've encouraged them to, to, you know, pursue the idea because I think it's a great idea, maybe in a different location that already has parking and some of the other things that they need, maybe the downtown core area. So at this point, you know, the application has been presented, it's still open, and we're not, we're not ready to proceed because I think the applicant is still working on some details and issues with it. So that's where that stands. Seven two, obviously, we're continuing to work on the downtown specific plan. We have released a redline version of the downtown specific plan. It's, can be found on the website, we have it in Word format now, and we are going to start being engaged and working with, you know, property owners and whatnot in the downtown area to make sure they, they both understand it and that if they have specific comments relative to, relative to the document that they have the ability to participate, you know, in the process. So that's kind of where that is. I don't know if we're going to end up having a June planning commission meeting. If we do, and it's highly likely we will, it'll be probably more of a workshop on the downtown specific plan, you know, and maybe starting in and just going through the document, you know, page by page, chapter by chapter, to make sure this commission, you know, understands it, which would probably be useful, I think, yeah. That's all I've got at this point.
All books?
I'd hope to have a planning department report for you, but unfortunately, I've been responding to another, a bunch of other emergencies, so haven't been able to get that out to you. So you'll, you'll see that probably the next day or so, in the email. Yeah, yeah, in the email.
At this time, I'd like to adjourn the City of Riverbank Special Planning Commission meeting on Wednesday, May twenty-first, two thousand fourteen. Thank you.